Your fans and faithful to Brother Thomas Fannin from Shawnee Premium Baptist Church has come to make some prayers.
And I really thank you that we have the presence of calling our Father. Thank you that you look upon us with the kind and sincere mercies. Thank you from spare to somebody of this dreadful storm that was scheduled to be in our area, like in Oregon. Spare to those that were in the storm and those that have lost their lives and family members in their life savings or hold a property, I pray that you and bless them to recover quickly. Comfort those that have been injured physically and lost blood vessels. Even those that are still in the path, protect them, keep them safe. But you're well, Lord, in charge of this storm, not even ocean of waters, not bring any harm into it. You'd be grateful for that. But get you go on ways to be best and do those things that we're in our weak people ways, so they understand how things happen again and go on ways and take care of them. I pray your blessing upon it. Commissioners and I say, take care of the county's business and those in staff and other elected official states and positions that you would be with them as well. Be with those that represent the needs of our county. Help us, Lord, and support down in the me, I can do, do all the things that we need to do, even if it's only paying their taxes and praying for those that need help. Be with our military men and women and first responders, all that go to make up the protection we have around this nation and around the world. And I ask you to be with those that are putting their lives in horrible ways, they take care of good cell phones and other issues that keep us going in a good country. Forgive us of our sins, as I pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
And today we lead this new flag of the United States of America. And enter this love of the world to change, one nation, one God, and the deliverers in heaven and earth.
Well, thank you, Brother Thomas, and Brother Lee Nelson, we're very appreciating all of our local churches and pastors coming to pray with us.
Thank you.
We welcome everyone here this evening. We're glad that some of you with us. The next meeting is fifty, September the seventeenth at nine AM. We will move on to item number three, approval of the agenda. We already have a couple of changes. We're going to add seventeen A, which is Tim Holton's logging solutions to the suspension of utility purposes at the Perry-Colei Airport. And we're going to move item number eight on the consent items to the regular agenda for eighteen A, and that's the board should consider approval of execution of deed from a TMS deal as the sender's bond clerk. Are there any other changes or additions? If not, is there a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Motion, say it.
A motion in a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. Motion carries. This is public hearing number four. The board is called to first at two public hearings that for this day at six PM are issued their act as possible to discuss and receive public input regarding the possible grant submission to the twenty 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 twenty-one funding cycle of the Florida Recreation and Development Assistance Program, known as MRDAP, for that, requesting funding assistance in the amount of fifty thousand dollars for the rehabilitation of South Park.
So that's what my view is, to go ahead and submit the application for South Park for fifty thousand dollars. And I think it's best within a workshop that we would be trying to redo the back at the airport, put rubber molding around the pipeline, fix the planks or replace them in one way or another section, to put some wire in it and to repay, or not repay, restrike the parking lot and to fix the sidewalk leading from the parking lot to the back of the airport.
You could do all of that for fifty thousand dollars?
Well, we are hoping it works.
Wow, good. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, this is a public hearing, the first of two. Is there anyone here that would like to come and address the board concerning these issues? If not, we're not going to vote on this tonight. Are there any comments from the board? If not, we'll move on to the consent items, which are fifteen through sixteen, with the exception of eight, then it's going to move to eighteen A. Is there a motion to approve? We had a motion by Commissioner Depp, second by Commissioner Murphy, and further discussion. If not, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Topic request, number seventeen. William R. Rusty Goldman to appear to request relief from contracts for these forty-five plus acres of land at the Perry-Colei Airport. I don't see Rusty. Does someone in here know anything about this?
So that in June, Mr. Norman sent a letter that requests fifty D. B. from his contract for the forty-five acres at the airport that he that used to produce hay. Or can you send them with personal? He currently has two contracts with the board for the production of hay.
The parcel, um, he's talking about, he's getting back his, some dust of our drive up here, probably doesn't carry some problem about him. And he got this front part, which is part just off the FBO, and the contract these two days was separated by that, right? This takes you following what you want out of, but never produce hay. I think every one time there was nothing that ever happened with it. This was the biggest part of the hay.
George, that's eighty acres, that's the first lease he had up here on the park. The last one was one that was under development, where he gave so many years to get it to go and sell it, he could produce it out of rock.
I believe so.
Yes, yes.
So he was going to give up the one, the original one, the one that was right, that ran ELPs up coming, that was the idea?
But it's the one that's not producing, the one he wants to give up.
My partner.
Right. One of the problems, since he decided.
He indicated to to me that, you know, not only had he been unsuccessful, I would say, in in growing hay, that he just did not have the demand any longer. So he requests, and comrades, correct me if I'm wrong, but this contract really doesn't have an out clause in it where, so we really need board approval to release him from the contract if that goes below the board.
Are there any other concerns?
The question I had in reading that, is tax 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 paid of the of the agreement? Has he paid twenty-five dollars per acre for those first three years, right?
Correct.
Thank you for this year?
No, he has not.
So he can say any hay this year?
On the on the page, was I not releasing?
Yeah.
All right, well, the years, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, two thousand, at least, it's twenty-seven dollars per acre, okay? So does he pay it in vain? Does he pay for two nineteen, two thousand nineteen?
He pays if I set him a thirty for these fifty years.
But he pays September thirty, that's after the two thousand nineteen year, right? So then he stays, and he hasn't paid. What's for another thing?
I would have to check, but he's.
I checked with Danielle, she said, you know, I paid this year.
This was the track that the board allowed him to lease, and he was going to try to get it where he could put the hay on it, and then, I think, they come in, it means that solar fields and topless solar fields, is that part of it? That's not, that's not part of this contract, and he originally requested a release for the development of solar fields, but that is not part of this contract. I think he was a little confused about that part. That's part of the other contract that he has.
Part of the, yes, ma'am.
So he's only requesting a release for this particular portion.
So, Dr. Do, in two thousand nineteen, he has the benefit of having the property drawn the entire year, okay? And then, because of two thousand twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three, I don't think it would be fair to make him pay twenty-one, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three, y'all?
Yeah, I think that, I would like to now.
I wouldn't either.
Now, he hasn't cut any hay in two thousand nineteen. I don't really think he ought to have paid for that. I thought he offered.
I mean, I'm with you on that. I don't think he needs to pay.
I don't think he needed to.
Ain't got nobody.
Yeah, he cut the hay, and he gives back, maybe advertise and leave to somebody else.
Paying him now? You ready to cut? Is there any other plan? He was out there at one time, and I don't think that probably ever happened to him.
The only question that you would have, and I don't disagree with what y'all are saying, is if you were in business, if it was a business, okay, you were the, and you were leasing to him, you wouldn't have the benefit of using your property that you had the whole year, two thousand nineteen. Y'all had the option of being stewards of the county and trying to keep people in business and so forth, to let him out, that's practical matter. Would you follow in the plan, y'all?
I would pay him, just let him out of it and stop charging anything. That's fine, if they, now, what, what, the list of release, which it will be, what are we going to, what are we going to do? What can we do?
Well, we can advertise again, if if you want to continue to, to allow people to produce hay on that parcel you can. Or do you know of any other potential uses for that property?
Other than the hay field?
I think we're a little restricted. So I would, I would suggest that we re-advertise and open it back up to the public who did on this particular parcel to produce hay.
And that's at eighty cents, about eighty-seven dollars an acre times forty-five?
So if you have a map of the situation, it was thirty-nine fifteen.
About four thousand dollars.
Okay, so that four thousand a year.
Well, too much space for a land, in my opinion, but anyway, I didn't, I didn't bid that.
And it's just, if if so, what, what could go there, what would be the steps and how would that work?
Re-lease it, if you can. I believe that's too small of a parcel right now to to explore, but I would say we could put the same conditions in the new lease, that if we were able to secure that, you know, someone to to provide that further, that we could in the contract. I don't think we've been successful so far in marketing the airport parcels because they're too small. I think, from what I understand about solar business right now, it's larger tracks that are are being utilized right now, and down the line, there may be an opportunity for us with these smaller parcels, but I don't believe there's an opportunity right now for that.
Well, we could have that, potentially have that call, that if something came along, but we'd have to make it fair for whoever's fair to have a crop, you know, you have time to make money or whatever, lock something out. I believe one of you got the idea from this before, and you had one of them there.
I believe he did. Because it may open up an opportunity for someone else.
Okay, all right, thank you. Is there a motion to release him from this contract?
I'm making motion release.
Okay, any further questions? If not, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, same time, motion carries. Next, it's seventeen A that we added, and it's Tim Holton's logging solutions to the suspension of utility purposes at the Perry-Colei Airport. Lord, can you preface, Mr. Holton, with, you know, the history of what we accommodated for staging at the airport and what happened during the storm?
Well, October last year, but as much as you know, we stayed there for, uh, we killed it, we killed it, we had a buddy truck, that kind of thing, sleeping quarter and everything for him. This year, when this storm came up again, our tangorion came up again, we were called upon again, we stayed some equipment that was going to just be here for a short period of time, but the storm reported up for, and that's where Mr. Holton comes in, this kind of thing. Basically, it was a legit company, four horsepower, eight, four big energy, TCO, I'm adding the others. Anyway, even though it's all to us about possibly doing long-term plans for even the airport, we have a closure on the back, only six two four, which we're on cemetery side. I think it's still about four thousand, two long, it's paid, I mean, four to five, it's still paid. Yeah, I mean, even though it's all to us about possibly doing long-term, leasing all that as well, and you're all explaining to you, we, uh, I only think.
Thank you, Lord. Thank you, both. Thank you for having me here. We appreciate your cooperation during this emergency. So my name is Tim Holton. My company's name is Logging Solutions. I'm from Houston, Texas, and I've been working with the electric utilities since two thousand and fourteen, when all the nation stores started to store, and then fifteen, sixteen, all the utilities along, or two thousand and four, when we had Charlie Frank's team in Ivan. So what we provide for the electric utilities is life support. So when you've seen the line trucks and the line trucks all over North America, they refer to that as mutual assistance, because none of the utilities have enough within their their unit to be able to restore the power after major weather events. So one of the things they need is storm logistics, housing that we build in trailers, shower trailers, laundry, and we put up a tent and we feed them, and then they go out and do the fourteen-hour sort of work to do the restoration. So what they do is they mobilize us and come close to the storm, so using four and five light in this blast storm, or the dorian, passed up the two sites, and of course, the dorians begin to become much more severe, they begin to slow it down because they didn't want it to get too close with all the the danger of coming to the site close to the coast. So we reached out, because part of my team was here, I actually physically was on the property last year after Hurricane Michael, I was in support of the Duke Power Company at that point, and they had a logistics site out there. And we asked if it would be possible, one of our contacts did, and permission was given early, and then we slowed everybody down before they'd get too far into Florida, because they wanted the flexibility to redeploy us. So what we did is we amassed about a hundred trucks and trailers, we left all the power under them, and we fueled locally, and we hired the local fortacan and trash companies to help us, and we just, we hung out there until we got three deployment orders, which came just a few hours ago. And it looks like Florida Power Light's not going to need our services, and they told us to go home. In the process, Duke said, we need you, everything that you have there, please come up towards Wilmington and a few of the towns up there and get ready to support our team, because we have a lot of line work there. So what we're, first of all, I want to say thank you for hosting us, and that we we want to be grateful and acknowledge that you guys went out of your way to say yes when we leave this town, so thank you very much. The other thing is, we will make sure that we leave no debris, that everything will be clean when we leave here, we want you to have everything back to be a fountain. The other thing that we were thinking about is, since we've been here twice now in the last twelve months, that this is a strategic site, not only for Duke Energy, but it's also for the power light, for my type of services, when they call us, stop before they get it too far in to redeploy it. And if something in the future might be available for us to discuss, we're going to arrange a stern briefing session, that we could work out something that would be for you all, and we could meet some kind of requirement for you all to participate and be involved in using that that entire program, the hay equipment. So then, the basic outline that I have mine.
Any questions from the board? So, this week, recap what you said. You would provide temporary housing in the form of trailers?
Yes, ma'am. These are fifty-three foot trailers that you normally would do, dry which you'd see over the road trailers, we've taken those and we've up sitting them with bunk beds, climate control, so that they could put the crews in. This is kind of a standard way to house alignment for a short furlough duration.
And you provide food?
Yes.
And where do you get the food from?
Food typically comes with our caterers. In this case, so many of the caterers were tied up with the Florida market, they come with us, and our caterer follows us from Houston, part of our team.
All right. You know, we have a lot of motels and hotels and restaurants here, so what would be, just help me understand, what would be the advantage of what you're proposing, rather than using other hotels and motels and restaurants?
Sure. So to give you an idea of the capacity that we bring, we would bring anywhere from one to two thousand beds. When they line out a utility crew, to keep those guys together and half them, they bring them into a facility like yourself here, or a fairground, and they build out a staging area, and they park their line trucks, their material yards, and and all the equipment they need to restore power in their service area. And in order to keep those guys in one spot, to give them their logistics orders, that's how they found it to be efficient.
Oh, well, since we have something that I don't think our attorneys, you have a chance to review this, have you?
I looked at it prior to the meeting today.
You need more time?
Well, I got some things to say real quick, yeah.
You what?
I got some things to say real quick about, um, let me see. Number one, in the Florida law, I I cannot condemn y'all, you know, with sovereign immunity under seven sixty-eight twenty-eight, so that we have to be a, I wrote it out, you know, because the party did not accept the license law, cannot condemn the license fee in the Florida law, and the license law specifically does not lay sovereign immunity pursuant to chapter seven sixty-eight twenty-eight, Florida statute. Now, seven sixty-eight twenty-eight does provide for sort of a pseudo waiver, but it does, it only weighs up to a point, so that needs to be in the union agreement, so, for lack of a better term, it's the license, it's the whole harness together, you know, and then, secondly, on the second page, applicable law, this license, they'll be governed in accordance with the laws of Texas. No, sir? It will be governed by the laws of the state of Florida, and if my client's going to sign it, can do what I ask them to do. So it would be, it would be state Florida, and then, thirdly, and you'll find this in every contract that this state has, they always make us sign a venue, being we don't count of any litigation, but in this case, venue of any litigation would be solely in the state of Florida, not federal court, state court. And this was one for, I think it was like fourteen days, am I understanding that you're not going to need it?
We're ready to depart, and we we wanted to give y'all something that, with faith, to give you, we threw it together real quick towards the end of last week, I was for the holiday, you know, we considered for you all to look at, make any changes, and I would accommodate, and I will accommodate, any appropriate which you need provided, to have nothing to go by.
Am I understanding correctly that we don't need this, ma'am?
You don't, you don't need it, ma'am.
Oh, okay, all right. Well, I I don't really have any objections, other than what I mentioned, you know, it's a practical matter, and representing my client, the board can't do that, you know. Y'all follow what I'm saying?
Yes, yes.
Now, I have a question.
Yes.
Are you asking us to execute this agreement? So that you won't have to do it over and over, can you come back to stage at our airport? Or is it, this will have to be done over each time you come? You know, make it clear.
Yes, you did. So initially, the desire was to have something in place that would, you all would be comfortable, that we would give you whatever you need, a proof of insurance, something, a whole harness agreement. So if we perfected something, we would hope to put something in place that would all could go into future. So, but for right now, we're going to depart tonight, and and then we'll clean up behind ourselves, because they want us in North Carolina, starting tomorrow, start prepping for the line search. So what we were hoping is to start this conversation for the next time around, or even when we're done in North Carolina, could we come back, because the hurricane season is over, and it looks like there's quite a bit of activity in the Atlantic that involves, and it could very easily be that there's a repeat performance.
We hope not, we hope it don't happen.
I understand, me too. But to be strategically close to be able to support Duke, or or rescue him out in this area, if that was an accommodation to be made, under your terms? This is only just in the test, to give you something, and then we would work with you in any way that you would need, as it is.
We're pleased. Well, I, when I went out there this morning, I followed the thing, all the trucks out there, and I remember being there, look, he had a local vendor, that furnished some fuel for, take, take the semi, he had a local vendor out there filling up all the semis this morning, so he using local, local people, yeah. And answering your question about modells, I don't even think, they give them places, he used this equipment to spot, and like, he took them over there and furnished a model, affordable model, he might as well take it, it's bigger than North Carolina, South Carolina. He might actually taking away from the local people here, you know, when he was, when that group was, uh, here last year, they furnished all the camp, you know, all the little modells, including all the people while they were staged out there with all the line trucks, and there really no way they could, they were seeing people around the block, every kid, there's no way the modells, all the rest, and very good, they kept up with it anymore, you know, with all those trucks that come and go with wonderful wires, that even.
You know, my concern is always, I don't want to take away anything from our local businesses.
Well, they want, they want to take away the local.
If that's the way, that's fine. You understand that, don't you?
Absolutely, and that's why we bought, I think we spent close to ten thousand dollars in fuel in the last four days, keeping the trucks, we use the local vendors here to top off those trucks, and they're ready just to roll in a local sanitation company to provide on the site their sanitation, and and some of our staff rents quite a few hotel rooms for some of the administrative staff. The truck out of birth, they have these are over the road trucks out, so they complete in their truck, that they're swinging for shipping.
Any more questions?
I have a comment. I served twenty-four years on the board of Truck County Elections, I'm elected to use cookies, and in stormy events like this, you got to call in vehicle assistance. And small co-op, they squeeze out some beaters. If you're going to call in forty people to help your crew, then you got to have hotels, and the hotels were simmering up, Rick Ray was ahead of them, the hurricane event, the people had to travel to get out of the way, and so, we had to go as far away from bad And so we had to go as far away from bad as Florida was in for a year. And Cal Hasty signed up hotels for the housing business. And you, and that was about thirty or forty people you tried to put up. You're talking about over a thousand or two thousand, big numbers. So we don't have a hotel space to accommodate those. And I want to teach you everything that I can. Because I've, I've been through some dinner games, been out water and water just for five days, black sea and I was home.
Are you ready to make a motion now?
I'll make the motion that we, um, ask this bone to, uh, plan up the language to be with the business investigations and the treatment and bring it back to us to prove. And I'll play the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Page. Second by Commissioner Moody. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Tell me thanks.
Thank you very much.
Competitional officers, other government units, number eighteen, to carefully discuss the voids which is what refers to advertising for sale of a statement D party.
Okay, um, the first thing that I want to discuss, um, is you know, we got approximately thirteen parcels left on the bid. And I've been contacting, um, last Thursday or Friday by a person that's interested in one of the parcels that didn't sell previously. So my request is to the board, do you want to re-advertise or what we want to do about these thirteen parcels? And the second thing is the D stack was on the agenda, being executed. I have one. She'll be a bid wishing to withdraw her bid, five hundred dollars on that parcel. The property arpreters' records show that there was a house on property and, um, it wasn't there. I think the lady next door totally was stealing it from the bank. So she's off house alone and so she wants to withdraw her bid. And I thought, I mean, that is a red.
Was there just one bid on that property?
Yes, that's on.
So we have to rebuild it?
Yes, it was there in the first place.
What is your recommendation?
Well, we got thirteen parcels of land that should be put back on the capstone, which we sell. Uh, the first time we sold three parcels, next time we sold four, we had five, so that's just four, so that's, you know, that's a good word.
I say, yeah, this must, this would be a expensive thing now, I'm just looking at the rest of the board.
How come? Re-advertise, but you don't want that, bro?
I, you don't need to allow that person to withdraw, um, so I'd ask, nobody paid for it yet. What the procedure is that when that D stack is executed by the board, uh, call each one of them and tell them how much money, the sense of the bid and how much the sense of the recording is. Have the courage to get each one of them, I'll take it for the recording, have it recorded and send it back to the board.
And that's the one, number eight, that I've, that you're talking about, is the date eighteen, Matt, and who's that?
The other thing is, uh, I hope y'all understand what, uh, what Daniel was talking about was that, um, so one person that did, that thought they were getting a house and they didn't get a house. And Danny and I talked about it and of course we thought it, y'all, it's up to y'all, but, uh, if y'all were going to allow her to withdraw her bid. That's what Danny was saying, um.
Okay.
That's up to y'all.
You have a question?
Mark.
Yeah.
Mark by all three three, fourth quarter road, um, when I was working on the story, which hasn't gotten any paper yet, about these did, on the, I'm assuming it's that particular parcel, if you go to Google Maps and look at it from above, the house is gone. If you look at it in street view, it's an older version and the house is still there. I, I had actually a date on when those were, because it was about forty years difference between those two. So it's not this property arprender on street view, the house is still there.
Well, I hope for me, with that parcel, the constable lady that, um, uh, called me about three, four years ago and asked me what figure they had to go through to come put it in on the estate. And the house was in disrepair and she didn't want to go in and fix the house up with children having issues and paying taxes on it. So that's when she goes, not paying your taxes, don't let your taxes go.
So, okay. Um, item eighteen, do we need to have a motion and a vote to re-advertise?
Yes.
So let's go back and take care of that one.
And then you need a motion off that two, um, uh, that this lady withdrew her bid.
Two different motions?
I think it would clear the record up, anybody that's willing, what y'all was doing.
Yeah, let's do a motion bid for eighteen.
I'll do it.
Okay.
I'll take it.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Page, second by Commissioner Page. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. But that'd be re-advertised now. For eighteen A, um, we need a man to, um, uh, to display to, um, back it off.
No.
No, that's one deal.
It's about the property, yeah.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Page, second by Commissioner Moody. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item nineteen, Marty Hopkins, chief deputy, covering his sheriff's office, to appear to discuss the donation of two horrible buildings to the place he has emergency management operations center, E O C.
Good evening.
Hi.
How's everybody going?
Good.
Good. The sheriff has had the good fortune of having two buildings donated to the sheriff's department by the school board from the closing of the Old Perry Primary School. As you know, office space is quite limited and it doesn't look like anytime in the near future we're going to be able to build all this safety building or anything like that. And we have a lot of needed office space. We need office spaces for our investigators. We need an interview room that is a video interview room. Right now, we have to go borrow the city's, we don't have our own. So these two buildings will allow us to do that and also include in a training room for the sheriff. Now, uh, he's already been in contact with P K, talking about moving them. It'll be moved to specification. We talked to the city about utilities. Apparently, the county owns for this station there already. So the hookup for the sewer is no big deal. And, uh, so we're just going to go ahead and get those buildings in place. We'll make them aesthetically pleasing and, uh, make them nice office buildings right there on, on the ranch.
Good, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I'm glad to call, because I've had those, those days with you. Now, are you, do you have the funds to acquit these buildings or you go with the grants or?
Oh, we have a little bit of both. We have a little bit of funds and then we have some votes and we'll, we'll volunteer our time to work on them and do things ourselves too. Plus, we have inmate labor, little evidence department, things like that.
Okay.
We got, we got funds to pay, yes, we're going to take care of that.
That's a good point, yes, we are.
All right, thank y'all.
Thank you.
You too.
Okay, county staff, how?
I just wanted to try, is it important to, um, do a motion for, um, executing the other bids that they didn't, that they dropped?
Tell them that executing the bid.
Yeah, they, they need to go back and do that. There was four of them, probably a million of them, we've seen, for the town to execute that.
Thank you. Do you think you want to make that motion?
Motion to, sorry, all the rest, carry, execute the bid.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Now, we can go to county staff, item number twenty. The board to consider approval of and ratifying grant application documents to the Gulf Consortium requesting funding to complete a feasibility study to determine if Hagan's Cove is a viable location for a public recreational voting facility as amended by Melody Cox, grant director. I've got a lot to say about that, but go ahead.
Um, well, we're making progress. We've discussed the feasibility study for some time and the application is complete because of the timing of the next Gulf Consortium meeting to then, um, the end of September. Um, we have submitted them. If the board chooses not to follow through, we can just withdraw the application. So the first one, item number twenty, is, um, the feasibility study to, for, um, Hagan's Cove. And we're requesting and, uh, funding in the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars. This is the first grant application we've completed. It may, I'm not exactly sure how much it will take, but that's what was, that was the guidance to the Gulf Consortium.
Okay.
I, I, I think that, uh, Tim, you know, Tim's done it a lot of times and he did a great job identifying this, this Hagan's Cove and, and his vision, I think, is a great vision. My concern is, we already have a lot of traffic congestion in Seton Beach. And, and, and I'll even talk about the next property congestion, probably property the same thing. And we're talking about potentially putting in a huge, um, boat ramp that Hagan's Cove may use. And how do we consider our, our traffic issues that we have already, we talked about it. So to me, it just seems like we're putting the, the carton for the horse, put in more to invite more traffic. But we don't, we can't even handle, we have a lot on our mouth, but I, I, I just don't know that I'm in favor of this until we can have a better plan of how we're going to deal with this. First thing is being happy, you know, we're already talking and it's one thing that I'd have to be on the next workshop agenda to start studying long-term solutions for being happy, whether they're traffic and for drainage. So I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering, would we be better off to try to see if we could use some of that money to fix being happy problems, fix our problems in Seton Beach rather than doing something that's going to create more of a problem? Plus, we can't even maintain the properties that we have now. And you're looking at, oh, you're going to, how are you going to go and maintain that? So I, I'm kind, I'm kind of, I'm totally not good, you know, on these boat ramps. Because I just, I just think we're going about it all wrong. Just my opinion. That's all. Next.
I'm with you on that. I've been against that decision, trying to start one from scratch the whole time because it's almost impossible to start from scratch and build a canal and build a boat ramp. There are boats, there are several boat ramps that would get to that point, but I'm like you, we need to spend that money in the depression and doing something instead of trying to do something.
Yeah, and you've got that one in Spring Warrior, which might still be a good, a good option because that wouldn't create, uh,
No more practice, the key thing.
You know, harmful, horrible harms, those things.
It would help, it would help a little bit, take a little bit of pressure off Seton Beach. And that, that would be, that's my, what I feel like.
Commissioner Murphy?
I believe that the purpose of the feasibility study would be, you're right, to be able to.
Five thousand dollars, James.
So, are we going to come to that decision ourselves, you know, channel ourselves? I don't have all that involved. A feasibility study will provide that. So no matter what project we're looking at, anywhere in the county, we need to know how it's going to act, which is how best we can do it. You know, if it's getting in our, we know there is this, the occasional travel, you know. So it doesn't matter which project, feasibility study, we have better content. Both these projects, in my opinion, have potential.
Have what?
Have potential. Both of them have potential. But in my view, I think we have to issue both feasibility. If we do nothing, it's not going to be a good, it's not going to be a sound bill giving a call. In my opinion, from what I'm able to, my position, is that both projects, if we see where the feasibility is, like, position. That's my opinion.
Well, we set money on feasibility studies before.
Well, there's no national, there's no national, there's no national public to do it, what?
Um, I'm just not considering that money on feasibility studies. My first one, we know what we can take that money and do with it, yes, sir.
Same with choice, um, a little bit of policy for that.
All right. A number of years ago, the county commission put together a committee to provide suggestions. I was on that committee. We talked to a lot of people locally, we talked to people out of that area. I'm also on committee for being happy. Uh, that has done ten things. On every time that we talked to, uh, Hagan's Peace Racket, those people, the manager, we were told that nobody was going to bridge a new channel through that distress reserve. Now, this is spending a number of years, but their manager comes up being happy at least once a year and has a horn, it's called a collar horn. Uh, she also shows up at other times to talk to specific groups. As far as her mind is made up, that feedback deserves is to preserve the habitat for the nursery along this whole part of the coast where we can have oceans, we can have a solid tourist. If you're considering anything that requires a new bridge channel, I suggest that you minimize your funds by looking at that part of it first before you spend any money on feasibility studies or anything else on things that require a bridge channel. Thank you.
Thank you.
We, we got channels right in that, the, that can, the, you can get a, you can get a repair firm, it's easy. We, we just need to try to stick with taking care of what we already got. Just like a fellow told me the other day, said, if y'all do acquire Spring Warrior, it wouldn't be but a little bit of work to clean out the water bar right there, it's going to go good and they would have got a hook in.
I concur with you. Commissioner, thanks.
My fishing bag isn't that old. My wife loves fish. We are fortunate enough that we've got a place to feed our, all our nights, cut out our own dock and boating and all that. But we still have to put our boat in somewhere, you know, to take it out to the service, so forth. I thought the point of the feasibility study, speaking now about Hagan's Cove, I mean, was to determine, part of the feasibility study would be to determine if dredging in those sea dregs stands would, would be something we can do.
That is part of that.
That's part of it.
Yep, sure.
Now, I don't know sure whether there are going to issue terms at all. And I know thirty-five thousand dollars of the B T O Philmonians a lot of them are going to spend to get a mention to a question. But if that is a no, then we can drop that off the list as far as I'm concerned.
If that is a no, I would go as far as to say you could probably drop a lot of the broccoli off the list.
Well, I'm not excited about the Hudson property because viable option for a public restoration or, I mean, somewhere I live, and maybe it was a document that lived in, it had something to do with the housing and, and all kinds of other stuff. That's not part of what, what I was looking for. I read that if Hagan's Cove could be made into one boat ramp, this would relieve some suggestions at being happy boat ramp that's got half the parking, so it's a common noise that go by, keep these boat ramps to get on there to it. But other than that, I'm not in, it's Spring Warrior, I'm very interested in that. With Hudson and Broccoli, Mariner and that, that could be off on that.
Well, I'm going to get to next, but while it's fresh on the burner, I'll say, um, I, I'm just not sure that I'm in favor of any more expansion of these boat ramps except the smallest, like, Spring Warrior that we already have here. Um, you know, it may relieve some of the, um, you may have more parking spaces for boats and trailers. Uh, you know, it may relieve some of the, uh, you may have more pockets for vessels for boats and trailers if we did have one at Hagan's Cove, but you're not having that many more people coming in. And when they go down the beach road and they turn right there and go down towards St. Hackey, we already have situations there where a lot of residents are concerned that if they needed a fire truck or an ambulance or something, you couldn't get through there. I've seen it, it was really clogged up there and congested. I would let's really see, uh, take, take some of this land and put it to good use and figure out our, our road system through there to make it better, to bypass what we already have. And to help out at St. Hackey with their drainage problems. I mean, you look right now, uh, we can spend, I don't know how many hundreds of thousands or million dollars down there to fix that. They need, they need help down there. And so on hand, and put in another boat ramp that's gonna cause up, uh, congest up the boat, it doesn't make sense to me.
There's still a lot of water down there. There's still plenty of water down there.
There's still plenty of water, and there's a lot, a lot of residents that I talked to, they were fine as well, we are. Uh, call for things to be getting more scary lately, I don't know, I didn't feel called to that. Commissioner, then?
I didn't even buy this, when you told us Hudson's solution, and I went to cut a meeting, I don't know what, how you spend the money. I hear feasibility study and, and if you go to one of them, they tell about feasibility study all the time. As far as Dr. Hudson's property, I don't know about Dr. Hudson's property, I don't know about Hagan's Cove. So I'm a fresh kid on the block, so now, somewhere down the line, I reckon we need to make a decision, what, what, what can we do with the money? I hear we can go down and spend money, you know, in the back of people houses, cleaning dredges, uh, and they all got my list kind of stuff. What do we need to do, what do the county need, do the county need any?
Well, okay, so here's where we are, just, just to recap. Um, the previous discussion, the previous instruction was to move forward with feasibility study for the first and second properties on the ranking street. We reached out to S W C and got their support, which surprised me a little bit, that they would actually partner with us for a release agreement for Hagan's Cove. The thought process of the, at the time, for Hagan's Cove is that possibly if we had an agency like S W C to stand shoulder to shoulder to us, that possibly, maybe, we would obtain permission to dredge. I, I have been unable to, um, obtain any type of answer from, from any agency, whether that be yes or no. So if the board decides to basically start from scratch, we would have to amend our S T P because these two projects follow word for word what is in the approved S T P. So if you want to start from scratch, I would say we need to start all over again.
And that's kind of where I'm at, and we've already talked about possibly changing the S T P. What we need from there is we need roads that can, that, that will get us around these areas where it's congested and it's dangerous when you need emergency services. What we need is drainage issues and a community access. What we could use is another boat ramp that's already there that wouldn't take a lot of money. What we don't need...
It's a little expensive.
Yes, what, what we don't need is the annual maintenance cost to us with a big park at, say, if you did get it at Hagan's Cove, we can't even keep up the little parks we've got now. How in the world are we gonna keep this up? This is gonna be impossible. Have a birthday party at Cherry Grove over weekend, they couldn't even let the children go out and play in the playground because the weed was too high. We cannot keep up what we have now. I'm not in favor of spending this money on something that we have not, and, you know, we've made a decision already, but it doesn't mean that we can't change our minds and use it more wisely. And to be careful about what we're asking for, that we're not asking for more problems instead of going after solutions. I'm, I'm all for my, I'm done now, so.
Anybody else want, and if I could interject, um, my understanding of why the times were voted in there the way they were, um, in, since how much we did and over how many years, is that we would make a property acquisition and then just basically sit on it for, for years. Until we have the funds available to, to start construction or to improve that property, you know?
We have no idea if you'll ever get a comment, we know the doctor, uh, Chris.
Chris, I'm a Chris.
They put millions into it and they never got a permit. And we, we, it's a high gamble for us to acquire this property thinking that we're gonna get something that nobody else has been able to do.
Yeah, we, we're not even gonna get enough money from the building on this deep water road and field to even cover the cost of coming out through that raw bed out there. I mean, we, there, me and this one sitting in the meeting with S W C, like their airport, and looked them right in the eye and asked them straight up, was there any possible chance of dredging across that grass bed out there? And they, they looked at each other like, no, you know, I mean, just read it in there, they said, we'll get back with you in a few weeks and let you know. We heard the word from them, that was, that was a no.
Yeah, we, we, you know, we, we got word that we were gonna come into some money, and we all got excited, and we saw the time in the sky and all these great things, and now that I've had more time to really settle down and think about it, I just don't think that what we decided was the right thing. But again, I'm just one person, that's my opinion.
And if I may, I am not sure that we can use Recorac money to build roads. I, um, and I know that I see a lot of projects, topics of sewer and different environmental projects, but I'm not exactly sure that we could use, how we could use Recorac funding for, for drainage issues. Don't we, I'm not saying we can't, I'm just...
After two or three years or four years, I don't think I'll know what we can do with the money.
That, that kind of turned into environmental, I, I believe we, I believe we could do that with, with four acres.
I haven't seen a similar project, but I'm, that's what I said, I don't know, um...
You got consultant, I'm a way, them, because Mappin' Gang got some story, man, how in the world, he don't have to give a fuck, uh, have you talked to consultant, or whatever, he editing it?
That consultant is for pot one fund, and yes, they are helping us, and we did not hire that consultant for Jefferson for pot three, no.
I cannot send Mappin' Gang money, you know?
If, if you wanna speak, raise your hand, I'm ready now.
I'll, I'll.
Okay, no, uh, stop, just raise your hand.
I'll say, uh, no, now, I think so.
Go ahead.
Young new messages I made, just, Mr. Moon. Spring Warrior is a very viable option for smaller boat ramps. Now, they were required, man, just like the bigger boat ramps, but not much.
No, come on.
What other boat ramps that have a, a channel are you thinking about? You know, Bee's Creek, I've heard it's a great one, Bee's Creek is gonna, uh, be on the market, that's what I see, and they got eight acres of parking there. But the neighbors down there don't want nobody there.
No, I talked to her today, she does.
She does, not a one of those down there.
Right, I, I speak to property, one, one or four million. Uh, but, you know, we got, we got fifteen million dollars, none of that spent.
Well, it's because we don't have it all on one side, and it's because of the way it was budgeted. The majority of the funds are budgeted for property acquisitions, which was why, just to remind you, the Hagan's Cove property seems like a more viable solution. Because we could use the funds, we could amend it, ask them in the S T P and use the funds for construction for a Hagan's Cove instead of spending so much on property acquisition.
Right.
But, I mean, that, that was the original intent of, I'm assuming, the Recorac committee, and that was the original intent of that board at the time, was for land acquisition or, for boat ramp. So that's the direction that we followed for so many, you know, this has been going on for several years.
Yates Creek is another one, that is, that's been a boat ramp for years and years. About there, old Yates Creek man, and Yates Creek, and it, and only has a certain amount of parking there, but if I'm up round there on that road, there could be more parking, you know? Then you'd be in four weeks near, you know, work with us on that.
And a year, correct, Mr. Conrad? Our lease with the family is up in a year for Yates Creek. And, and it will be, it will be put on market at that time, from what I understand.
But it, it's the fate of them, I believe, 'cause that property, it's one property that are full sale, you know?
Is that a good, good option, Nick?
That's a, that's awesome, but that, you can put everybody from guys on there twenty-four seven, Yates Creek, you know? But bigger boats have to have an after under the board to go out, you know?
Well, if, if we could use some of the funds for the empty, such as roads and drainage, and those kind of improvements, it would be more prudent to do the things that are necessary first. And then, if there's anything left over, then you can all be fun things.
I'm, if, talking about roads, if we're gonna spend money on roads, you go around, you talk to Keen Beach and go around the high enough or something like that, cross on the boat ramp? And incorporate a whole piece of highway there to eliminate all that, all that issue of life paths right there would be a thing to spend money on.
You definitely still have to spend it, but...
Yeah, that'd be very... If you're gonna spend for roadwork, and it's, it's to help the boat ramp and help the place to use your Keen Beach by across the mountain.
It would've been a solid for that, St. Hackey, they've got growth problems there, you know, we, we talked about that, that we would start really identifying and trying to see what we could do for the future for all the growth problems. St. Hackey's growing like trees.
I don't believe we can use Recorac funds for, for even a just a safety issue. I think it really has to be targeted for recreation or, um, recreation at the Gulf. So even a road that is associated with the Gulf Road Boat Ramp, I don't think needs the qualifications, I haven't seen any growth projects.
It would, it would give you a bunch more parking for the boat ramp where the highway comes there now, you could turn all that into parking space, you know, if you had a bypass. And it was, and, you know, I mean, I'm just took the thought.
Do you feel that about the city, Josh?
Yes, right, right.
What is the next meeting? How do you find out, I don't know these questions, it works out.
We could contact the board.
We'll get answers to those first, no?
Yeah, we, we can get, we can get an answer to that question, we can do that more.
But what's the way to make the board?
Look, I mean, when you talk about, somebody talks about Yates Creek, you talk about Bee's Creek and Spring Warrior. If Hagan's Cove was cost too much money to, to acquisition or Dr. Hudson's property?
Good stuff, he's been quite a lady.
What about Dr. Hudson's? Is there a house on it or no?
Yeah, it's got a house.
Do we need a house like that?
No.
Yes. You, you, Dr. Hudson brought this beautiful piece of rock here, it's got plenty of parking, but it's solid rock out in front of that plate, slap out the bird racks out there, rock. There's, there's no way to build a deep water channel out there without millions and millions of dollars worth of it.
I think it would be, and I think the property is a problem, but not with the county.
If you look at both logistics, both the properties in question, Hagan's Cove and Dr. Hudson's property. Hagan's Cove, you're gonna spend all your money building that road from a highway all the way out to the water, there would be a danger for Hagan's Cove. Through that feasibility study, that's exactly where they're gonna set it. You can cut and dredge brandings now anywhere in the state if you have other agencies attached to it. 'Cause anybody that ever reached out to the Department of Treasury Coast Guard to attach anybody to any of these facilities, so far we have S W C on board, harsh. But the more agencies we attach to these things, the more layers we have. We can take a train to where it is in the state, as long as we have attached things. Through this feasibility study, at no cost to the county, nowhere near the city, off the county at all. That old money comes through their sources. If you want an acute mathematical calculation, the way to go is through feasibility study. That's gonna help exactly what we're saying, so that we can come to some words of consensus. Those are ones we can grant projects, yes, but it is an investment, that's what we have to look at, take into account.
Okay, and now, here's Hagan's Cove. Did we know now that's not possible? Dr. Hudson's property?
Well, we don't know.
We don't know.
We don't have. We don't have.
I, I, Bee's Creek and, uh, Bee's Creek, just looking at it on the top of here, which one was talking most money from the property right now, five?
Oh, like Bee's Creek is really available, yes.
Bee's Creek's not available right now, but, yeah, but I'm not, I'm not talking about here.
Spring Warrior.
Okay, you got Spring Warrior, Bee's Creek and Yee's Creek. Look like that's people, the people...
But if you recall, you know, and I don't want you to go over, but if you recall, when, back in February, we went through a pretty exhaustive process of how ranking these properties. And, uh, I don't think, I mean, I know cost is a factor, but I think there were other factors involved in that, and, you know? I cannot recall how Yates Creek, I think Yates Creek was not considered at the time because there's no deep water access.
No parking.
I know parking, so...
They're unusable, all properties, yes, yes, ma'am.
So the reason these properties were ranked the, the way they are is because of, it, it is in compliance with our S T P. So in a way, if the board has taste of vision on how to spend these Recorac funds, then the S T P needs to be revised.
Well, I don't know that the board has yet changed their, uh, focus, I mean, I just stated how I felt, and I've heard how some of the other commissioners feel, but if Commissioner Murphy is correct, and it would take all the money just to fix the road in the Hagan's Cove, and Commissioner Moody's already said how much money it would take, then I don't think a feasibility study then would fit on the board.
I don't think, I don't think the, uh, funds that you used for the road, did you say that we couldn't use the funding?
I don't know that they can.
You don't know that? You didn't want to notice we can do that, and roads would be later on with a Firdat brand company.
Now, the only feasibility study at this time that I'm still interested in is the one for Hagan's Cove, because we've got partnership with, personally, all the land, we wouldn't have to pay for, for the land. Plus, if you had a deep water channel there with a truck, the Coast Guard, if you had a Coast Guard all over the facility there, that's more leverage.
That's right.
I think to get the permits into the dredging. And I think the county has mentioned to us that we probably will have to mitigate it. And there's that large piece of property that goes with Yates Creek, that's gonna be used for mitigation, which can be bought at the right price. I think if you start with a mitigation, it's something like, about twenty acres of one.
It's something like that.
Now, if you're gonna tear up one acre or three yards, you've got to...
You have to play it through.
A large ratio there. So if all makes feasibility study, I would be willing to support it at this time, would be the thirty-five thousand dollars to get some of the financing access just for Hagan's Cove. Now, the others, the Yates Creek property has some historical significance back from the Civil War, some Indian artifacts, and years ago, uh, the families had tried to stop some development down there, and they've got, uh, dockings, I mean, a total of five dockings. That can be obtained, so they're gonna fight the Bee's Creek, one point four million sale of the property, if it ever comes to sale. So I, I don't think that's gonna be difficult to pull off, you know?
I don't think, I don't think you could pull it over there.
I, I think I'm...
On Bee's Creek, I don't believe you could.
I don't believe you could do that, now Bee's Creek could be partnered as a mitigating piece of property if we got, only if we got the Hagan's Cove favorable feasibility study. That's, now, I'm with him, it's gonna take the fifteen billion dollars to dredge that canal out of Hagan's Cove.
Dr. Brooks told me himself, he was gonna put ten billion dollars in a canal that's right there, just out... that's right there, just out of Jelly Island, and that's what it, it already got estimated from the engineer group to dig again. And they already done four rentals and everything else. And that was, that was back then, that was on pound.
But it's a different question. Now, according, according to Kenneth, it's a short distance to a little canal out there from Hagan's Cove. So I still would like to think I'd do the feasibility study on that one rock. And it might not take the whole fifteen billion, if there's any left over, or if we change our mind, then I'm off doing whatever drainage you seem happy, or, uh, study, or, 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 or. You spend money on a, on a study, on a, 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 you know, we need to do something down there. And I'm making a plan for the street.
Thing heck is, right now, is my number one, like, if we, we go spending money on anything. We need to get up in the bus down there, get along that plane, get that water to that river.
That's right.
Without having, without having twenty-four seven around the clock to try to get that water over that hill there.
That's where I'm at. Now, hey, if I go back to my first point, even if we could get Hagan's Cove and put the road in, if we can't do the road, then the road is our responsibility then, or kind of lay it on the ramp and, and do a match or whatever it takes. And how long would it take if you ever did get that? But then, still, all, if, if this, if y'all remember this boat ramp that Kenneth laid out, and he laid out a very fine plan for several boat ramps and all kind of nice things to go with it. You feel that all these people are gonna be coming right down that beach road, just gonna turn, left, and you're gonna, and we still already have congestion there right now that's almost impossible. Or they're gonna come through Steve Hachey, who still has that problem. So again, we're putting the cart before the horse, but we're not looking at how we're gonna accommodate the traffic coming in here, even if we did it. I, I, I'm not in favor of a feasibility study. I'm, I'm in favor of helping the whole project. I would like to know how we can use this honey.
Through your feasibility study, look at, look at Hagan's Cove, how long is that road from the highway? There's a third road that goes all the way up to the water again, how long is that road?
It's probably a mile and a quarter.
Okay.
Not miles, a mile, a little bit of miles.
And figure the cost, and figure the cost to pave that road, and to get that road structured, do you get two lanes in there? How much do you think that's gonna cost?
A million dollars a mile.
A million dollars a mile.
But that's on my grant, that's what they threw us on, a million dollars a mile. But you got environmental issues down there right now on both sides of that.
On both sides.
Water's flowing across the highway already, Hagan's Cove rode the other day, my son back from the, hey, yeah.
One of the people in the neighborhood.
I mean, you, you, I, I, I don't want them to do it out there, Hagan's Cove or, or, myself, I'm just. Um, we can't even move Hampton Springs lot down there, you pick a boat, let's move to Hagan's Cove.
And, and I want to, I'm glad you said that, because at the meeting that I was at, which I'm gonna talk about later, last weekend, Tampa, and, uh, we had, um, a moderator, a guy that stood up and he talked a little bit about each county, about eight counties involved. And so when he put a picture of Porter County up there, one of the first things on there was this store called Hampton Springs Hotel Park. And I'm thinking, oh, my God, I hope somebody comes to look at it. But that is from a thousand people or however many, and that's what's out there. That, there's, there's trying to showcase that and send a little one back home.
We, we're getting sort of ahead of the horse, okay? My feeling, that's him feeling, I, I'm, we need to back up and look at this thing a lot, but, uh, stop thinking the decision will be over with, and there won't be a big crowd down there, 'cause the truck parked button in the front. You know, I mean.
Well, we could, we could do, I think, one or two things. We could make a motion to approve this, or we could make a motion not to approve it, is that correct?
I'll make a motion not to approve.
Okay, and we're talking about, uh, number twenty, Hagan's Cove?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second? So I'm gonna pass the, the damage over to the chair, and I will make the second.
I have a motion, well, you second, I'll give you else about, we've had a motion and I'm stuck. You want me to finish that with a motion? Well, now, all for discussion. Motion was by Commissioner Moody, uh, and second was by Commissioner Seale, that we drop the Hagan's Cove project, I believe that's the motion, right?
That's it.
Now, good, from now, that thirty-five thousand dollars, yes, for feasibility study on Hagan's Cove, I'm gonna put it all out.
Thirty-five thousand.
But, is that firm or, or is that a place, did you?
I, I think that, I don't, I won't say that, because we never done wanna do support. That's the, but that would be the boat's amount, is thirty-five thousand.
What, how much did the feasibility study cost, though, to get our, our dredger, that Kitten Beach came out, was it like fifty thousand?
I don't know, I don't believe I would hear them. What we would have to do is prepare documents to put this out for bid. And then, we would have to still go through the whole procurement process to hire, um, a consultant to conduct the study, the feasibility study. And I think we would have to be very clear, no, that was, that's all we can spend, thirty-five. I mean, that would have to be the boat's amount. And I think we would have to make it clear to this consultant what our particular areas of concern are, which would be, you know, any potential permitting issue. I don't, I don't believe even through the feasibility study, that we'll get a firm answer from D E P, because that's not the permitting process, it's just, just the feasibility study. So what you're getting is, in, in my opinion, is an expert opinion on what our chances are of getting permitted. But it would still have to go through all the permitting process with multiple answers before we would get a firm answer as they permit or as they increase or, or any other.
Well, I know that there's no firm price for the study itself. We have, we have the thirty-five thousand dollar budget, but we can do it coming along the time. That, that's what they should be, then the trade is on us to put in the other half or whatever it is. So we have no, no guarantee of what, what it was cost. And then, we have no guarantee of that, that feasibility stu- study would, did, did it work for us in terms of guaranteeing us that we could, uh, dredge it come out?
I don't think it would be, I, no, it would not be, I'm just gonna go ahead and say, that is not a guarantee, because D E P would not permit at that point. This is the expert opinion of where we stand when we ask for permitting. And, and any, you know, to judge any type of, or identify environmental issues, historical issues, things like that. And I do believe if we advertise, I mean, we, we should just reject this, we would not have to take any business outside of our business.
Yeah, that's a question. Would the feasibility study provide us more testing if the town were permitted? Of what the construction cost would be? How much rock is it, ten million dollars, fifteen million? Would you go that, that much depth?
I don't know.
We don't know.
I don't think you could, but they'd have to, they'd have to.
Well, I would, I would learn if this is part of that deal.
And that, 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 that gets really expensive, and then they got, if, then you pay a cool reason there for me, it's just, they're cool talking about it.
So all they done, well, they could've. Go online and say, well, in Florida, you need to, to see that's very, they're gonna give me a permit. County can't do it, send me my check, thirty-five thousand. And people, they have to provide us with anything to make them do it, you know. But anyway, we're having a discussion, say, for this.
Sean, you want to add anything to this? Well, I, I think I've, I've given you every mention that I can, but, um, my point of view, if we wanna go forward with any kind of project, I, I would suggest both, but we've already agreed not to go Hagan's Cove. We've gone this far, we've already put so much time and so much effort to get this far, to get those two narrow down to the one and number two. All of this going right now, I don't like that, Adam.
Comment, question?
All right, the question is, who's called? Motion was by Commissioner Moody, second by Commissioner Seale, we love having our students to express ourselves. All the prayers of the motions said aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, no. No motions, can't pass. You're aye.
Yeah, I'm aye.
Uh, uh, motion passed.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Will I ask a teacher? What, what would you like to do next with this project?
We got the number twenty-one, and let's talk about that one, and then we'll do that. Twenty-one, the board could consider approval of the national common grant application documents to the Gulf Consortium, consortium protection funding to complete a feasibility study and a basis to determine if the Hudson property is a viable location for a public residential building facility as intended by the grant director. I've already heard somebody say they were not in favor of the Hudson property. I stand, my, my same argument goes for this company as it did, um, for Hagan's Cove.
And that motion, do we not prove feasibility study on Hudson's front?
And I say it out loud.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further questions? If not, all the supporters say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Same sign, aye.
Motion's here. I think what we need to do is find out exactly how we can use the money. And then, once we do that, then we need to reconvene. And I know it's frustrating, I did wanna say again how much I appreciate what Kenneth put in for Hagan's Cove. I think it was a great, great plan, but I think we all agree that it's probably not the best place to do it right now. Um, but, uh, once we know exactly what we can do with the money, then, you know, then you just come back to the drawing, Hudson keep working it until we feel like we've done it right. We just don't feel like we have it right, you know.
And, and so would you, did we plan on maybe the September workshop, um, being able to provide an update on what we have and the steps that we would need to revise the F E T? Um, because once we know exactly what we can spend the funds on, then the F E T can be revised, and it would basically be starting, a painting of fresh start.
And, I, I mean, I know it's gonna be frustrating, all the people that worked so hard, but, you know, sometimes, sometimes people do have second thoughts, and sometimes boards do have other things to consider. And we just wanna make sure that, that we get it right, and that we're, if we have options with the money, that we're putting it where it really needs to go. It's kinda like at home, if you use your paycheck to buy stuff that you want instead of paying your bills, that's not, I kind of see it as funny why, I think we need to make sure we've got our priorities in, in place.
Everybody, I, I, I would like to say, uh, uh, here, we're talking about the rock. How many little places we got, we got Yates Creek, we got Springmore, we got Hagan's Cove, Yates Creek, how many little things we got rock? All of them, all of them. All right, then I give a lot of them, how many of them have to be dredged? Any other, all of them? Well, maybe we don't need to do them.
Well, that's, and we discussed that, I, I know that we brought some concerns to the board previously about is this, you know, will be obtained permitting because of the secrete preserve? Which is, that I don't think, I, I don't know that we'll ever know the answer to that, um, at this point.
And I think maybe Kennedy, down there all the regional, they don't have the same.
They are not in the middle of the secrete preserve, so.
What about the rock, what about the rock?
I don't, that I can't see.
I don't know, there's also, one place inside of Kennedy don't have secrete preserve, it's the only place, that, that was down. That'd be real good.
I think that the secrete preserve is pretty specific to Taylor County, which is what makes Taylor County so wonderful and worth all things. That'd be easy place to draw it now.
Yeah, I'm feeling busted.
Yeah, we all are, yeah.
The, uh, that old, that church, they're all with the funds? Or, or they actively distributed each year, who's saying that?
No, they hold the funds.
So they're not getting any interest on this fund?
I don't, I don't.
I had that question one time, they didn't answer that, it was for a story.
I mean, I don't know, we would.
So long as you wait to do it, you know. So, so, you know, you're liking the call, but, but that money, you say, go ahead, go ahead and spend it for something.
Treasury does in that money.
Yeah.
Is what they're doing.
B P has paid it? I, I don't know, B, I asked the question, has B P paid it? You're saying Treasury told me that, has B P paid it?
I don't know that they paid the entire amount.
Yeah. I, I imagine they're making annuals talk.
You know, I, I guess, I'm, I'm, I'm just thinking about Jefferson County, and all the things that, that you said about, you know, the rest of the money could and could do, you talk. And I wonder what Jefferson County's gonna do with all their money, if anybody ever, I mean, they, the Jefferson.
They don't have, they don't have a boat ramp.
I mean, so, if you can't, if you have to be used at the, uh, coast, so, it's, it's.
Well, some of the other counties are doing stuff, they just do a project. They're doing reef projects, um, there's some water quality improvement projects, is what I can think of off the top of my head. Um, I don't recall what Jefferson County is doing with their funds, I'd have to look it up.
Service systems is one thing that really put me in, trying to put money into an area, you know, that needs service system, like that.
First of all, folks, here's, here's something I wanna go about.
Right, yeah. That, that water quality business they talk about, that's one big thing some of them done, but, um.
I mean, if you go back, when you talked about the, uh, part of the, of the, they're a bit like a motion and second for our staff to, um, for us to reach that part. On the H, we see a, we have now, we're on H, at the, uh, the forty eighth, that you allow, you know, the, so, is, is, can someone make that motion?
I make the motion to be allowed, it's a question, don't want to, to withdraw from.
No, no, that's what I'm done, but the, the staff, you readvertise.
They readvertise, uh, also.
All right, we have a motion and a second, and all in, any further comments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Number twenty-two, the board should consider approval of awards of the Florida Palm Honor Assistant Grant Agreement between Taylor County and Department of Financial Services as intended by Mancakel County Department. This is so good, tell us about it.
Mine's not gonna be as, as crazy, I think it's the rest of them, man. Um, we got, uh, notice that we were awarded the first round of our grants, we would receive five, um, self-contained drinking and outdoor access C V A. The first round is about thirty-two thousand dollars worth of savings in account, the grant is one hundred percent funded. Um, the board approval accepts the grant. And then, we're expecting, we'll probably see a second round approval come around November. So hopefully, by the time it's all settled, it'll be about six, four, six, five thousand dollars worth of.
Good job, good job, I'd be real happy for my real staff.
Can I tell any more?
Oh, yeah, you want any more motion? But I'm gonna talk to them a little bit after, I think, I talked to them yesterday. Uh, one of your equipment was, and they weren't fighting that fire with fire. I saw them go cold and.
They're a lot of truck?
Yeah, two trucks, that.
That's rough. It's a, it was, it's a, a federal surplus property that we have, we have pinged through State of Florida's Forest Street. Yeah, sure, but it is, it got a ton of trucks.
Good on them.
And that one was with no cost.
I'm ready to grant contract.
Oh.
It, it, I'm, I'm not trying to mess with that, I'm just gonna say, I'm just gonna say something with this fault, and it's continuing. I just want to say something with this fault, and it's continued on annual appropriation of funds by the legislature. Then you, in dispute, will be in the county, way jury trial, and you have to pay your own return fees and so to see. Just wanted to remind you that that's the way these grant contracts go, so, if anybody asks you about that, you can certainly tell them, but we knew when we signed it, this is the way it goes, they ain't going to change it. And what's interesting about these contracts, they always, they must have one little man up there, or one little lady up there, reviewing contracts for a grant, so they always play it, put new stuff in there every time to make it more in their favor or something good. That's why I said.
I want appropriate for the year, so.
Yeah, that's why I said, with Mr. Ball, I said, we ain't going to agree to, to be under the laws of the state of Texas, that's for sure.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Murphy, second by Commissioner Dimpf, any further questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye. Motion carries. Let's keep looking for those good ones.
You can hand me the ball, do you, yesterday, I mean?
Yes, we had, uh, very well.
The city was out there also.
Yeah, it was a, a city call that we provided you delay for, um, in total, between all the firefighters on scene, there was maybe two firefighters, between the city and the county, and Madison actually sent an update. Of course.
Have, have water source out there?
Um, yeah, I don't know the water pressure out there, it was, there were some water issues early on, not because of the city water, it was some just internal system that didn't, so we worked it out and, very good.
Under general business, I was twenty-three, Chairman Finkel, to discuss M Corps meetings. Okay. I was down there last Tuesday for a very long meeting, there was not very many words, it was very intense, but I'm just going to give y'all some general information against some of the faults that I have. Uh, if you don't know, the M Corps is a multi-use quarters of regional economic significance, that's what it means. Uh, this bill originated with Senate President Delano, and was passed by the legislature this, this year. S D O T created a forty-one member task force, which I am a member. The M Corps has three quarters. You have the Southwest Central Water Connector, that's from Collier County to Close County, that doesn't turn up. We have the Northern Turnpike Connector, which will connect the current turnpike to the Sun Coast Parkway, which, the Sun Coast Connector is what we're concerned with, the Sun Coast Connector is from Citrus County, for that, uh, where it, where it ends now to Jefferson County, and this will include eight counties, Citrus, Leaky, Gilchrist, Dixie, LaFette, Taylor, Madison, and Jefferson County. Besides the eight counties, the study area's fact includes twenty-one cities and towns, five thousand six hundred and thirty-five square miles of land area, two hundred and eighty-six thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven residents, forty-eight thousand seven hundred and eighty jobs, two thousand two hundred and seventeen land miles of state highway system, a hundred and forty-seven miles of rail, and one T Corps. The M Corps purpose is to revitalize rural communities, encourage job creation, and provide regional connectivity while leveraging technology, enhancing quality of life and public safety, and protecting the environment and natural resources. M Corps' objective is advancing construction of regional quarters that are intended to accommodate multiple modes of transportation and multiple types of infrastructure. The task force rules are, I hate to bore y'all with this, but just information that I felt like, that I wanted to share with you, but the task force rules are coordinated with S D O T with pertinent aspects of quarter analysis, addressing such issue, issues such as hurricane evacuation, congestion mitigation, train and logistics, broadband, water and sewer connectivity, energy distribution, autonomous, connected share, and electric vehicle technology, other transportation modes, such as shared use, non-motorized trails, freight and passenger rails, public transit. Um, and all of this, um, falls technically or the enhancement of wildlife quarters and environmental, just, just area. It's to evaluate the need for, and the economic and environmental hurricane evacuation and land use impact on public communities, and in the task force to report their evaluation, um, that will be, um, by October the one, twenty twenty, to the governor. Um, the Sun Coast Connector and Northern Turnpike Connector evaluate design features and the need for acquisition of state conservation lands to mitigate the impact of project construction on lower quality and quantity of spring rivers, aquifers, regenerative ag land, and wildlife habitat. Um, to the maximum extent feasible, the quarter project construction must begin no later than December the thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, with the quarters open to traffic no later than December the thirty-first, twenty thirty. Okay.
I'll be back in your room.
We met, like I said, we met last Tuesday in Tampa for a full, long day meeting, there were many questions, and still many unknown. A large delegation from the public was present, and given the opportunity to speak, and believe me, for two hours, that's close. My main concern right now is number one. Will there be big builds that will bypass our town and have a negative economic impact on our local businesses? Will there even be a feeder or connector road in Taylor County? And who will sign the land acquisition and construction of this feeder or connector road? Will any feeder or connector road attract businesses, and if so, what kind? Will it be gas stations, fast food restaurants, and hotels? If this is true, if this happens, then there's a lot of paying jobs. How will this road intercept Taylor County? Will the only benefactors be landowners, S D O T construction company, and friends of the political partners? Will accidents on a fast-moving road require the county to turn more law enforcement and emergency services without the, from the state? And then the infrastructure maintenance of the feeder road could come from that? Will we move our rural environment to a population explosion? They said over and over, there's nine hundred new people every day that enter Florida, either through birth or by move, nine hundred a day. Uh, you know, our rural environment is, is rich in natural resources. Um, for, but, those are my concerns, I did, I was able to, um, express some of my concerns, when I go back, I'll outline more of these. I think it's extremely important that we hear from the community, and they stress that a lot, that they really want feedback from the community, so, I think it's prudent for everybody to know, it's nothing about this, and stay connected, go to the meetings if you can, stay in contact with, uh, us, uh, you can go online, and keep up with what's going on, but, um, the main thing is just, uh, uh, your input is very important, and the, the meeting, uh, base and, uh, places, let's see, I've got that somewhere, for, for our, uh, task force, um, the next meeting is October the twenty-third in, uh, Citrus County, and then on October the twenty-fourth, the next day there's the Community Open House in Dixie County, and then our next meeting, the third meeting, is December the seventeenth here in Taylor County at Big Ben Technical College, and then the Community Open House on December the nineteenth in LaFette County, Public Workshop January, February, they're going to announce those. The fourth meeting on March the eleventh in Madison County, there's another Community Open House on March the fourth in Jefferson County, Public Workshop April and May, and that will be announced, and then the fifth task force meeting will be June the ninth in Leaky County, so, uh, and then, uh, June the eleventh in Gilchrist, June the thirtieth, um, the, as you can see, um, there, there was the public involved. Any questions?
She did well, I watched it. Good, good. I watched that, she did well on what's on the Florida channel, represent as well, I'll be good as well.
Thank you, thank you.
They didn't show you the route, the route, did they? Did they show you a route, this again?
They did not have a route yet, because all of us were real interested, to show us the road's going to go, don't even know where the road is going to go yet, and the one thing that I expressed was, it's, and I feel, I feel like, from everything that I've heard last season, this road's coming, the, the governor's behind it, the legislature's passed this bill, and I believe it's coming. Now, if it does pass through Taylor County, which it probably will, I sure don't want it to be out there somewhere and bypass our business, uh, uh, area here, and hit the, hit right on the line, and not stop in Taylor County, as it is now, uh, y'all know, many people stop and gas up and do the mountain east here, so that's a real concern, that if someone takes people away and starts bringing them in, and they're not gonna finish, if it creates jobs, there's gonna be construction jobs, and S D O T's gonna have this all-construction of people that they're gonna hire, um, you know, I guess, the, maybe they could hire from local people, I don't know, but, if those jobs are going to be at the feeder roads with gas stations and restaurants and, and hotels, that's, that's a lot of paying jobs. How, and my question is, how, how's it gonna bring big industry in? I mean, we're all thinking, oh, yeah, big jobs and big money, and, and then, huh, maybe gas stations and hotels, oh, huh.
I, I can answer one thing, that I've heard too, talk about the highway years ago, when they talked about building a highway through the county, where it, where it hits I can will be a hub to the state out there, and that'll be a big industrial hub right there where it hits I can, and that will be where big jobs will come into, like Amazon Squarehouses and I don't know what that's what, what people say, that would be the, you know, uh, the hub that where it hits, the major highway, where it's a hub, where that, y'all will come in.
Unfortunately, we don't have.
Well, we're not that far from I can, can't drive it out there. I mean, you know.
Yeah, and I, I, I agree, I hear, and we, we argue many times, uh, with development issues, of, well, we're not that far from I can.
Everything, everything coming down I can, it's going to be a trial, or a turn around that looks, and all of, that would be warehouse city right there around the hood, and, and the last, you know, everywhere you got a hood or something like that, off of Titanic Island, it's, it's a industrial park, you might look like.
Well, it's just, there's so many questions and not answers, I mean, I, I guess they've got this idea of business, and, and they're not saying where it's gonna be, or how it's gonna be created, or anything like that, just that they're going, they want to move the traffic from Southwater out of there as quickly as they can. Now, somebody made a comment that, uh, I think it was the guy from Dixie County, but I'm not calling, he said, well, you know, if you go out on nineteen, almost any time, you'll see that many cars. You don't see that many cars, never in the hurricane, we see a lot of cars out there, but in general, if you're out in here in Palm City, we don't have a traffic problem. But I know we got a traffic problem downtown, and so, it was, I mean, and I, I, I just, I guess I don't know if I support this or not yet, really, because, if I knew that it was going to have a good, positive impact, but nobody knows, or is it gonna cost us more, we're gonna have to put more, uh, sheriff's department and police out there and take all that, I, I don't know.
Is it gonna be a toll road?
It will be a toll road, yeah. And, I know I talked to the representative from Citrus County, which was Crystal River, because I was going to try, but I'm on all the counties, that doesn't certainly be one that's, no, so, you know, you have to go, and we stop every time we go to Pam and, and Crystal River, they just want something that's, um, bad or something, and he said, oh, no, we're hoping, he says, we're hoping, we're for the road, and we're hoping that we have enough of stuff in Crystal River that people want to get off and come see what we've got. Well, if they have enough to get the street for us.
We're gonna.
Yeah, and I think, well, what if we got that somebody want to get off and see?
There's, there's coast line out here, they've got the best beach in the coast, what?
But if you're going from A to B, you ain't got the biggest hole in the car.
But there's a lot of people that come and go, that'll come out here to the coast, I mean, you know, I feel that.
I have my, my great experience, and it's out of him, but what you said is, if you build a road that takes you to Perry, it's nine miles out there in the bay, then there's got to be a nine-mile road to Perry. Nobody's gonna turn off nine miles to come get gas. I, I hope that it comes through Taylor County, well, it's on the west side of nineteen, or the east side, that's relatively close, so you can see, uh, finally, we get off at certain intersections, and we can still draw some extra local business. Now, my long-term hope is, is that we would track, something like I've seen, you know, on I can, or around Marietta, a hundred dollars difference in warehouse, maybe we could track one of those here, even though we're not at the hood, but, my, my fear was if you built half a twin here in Bay, not gonna get it up, no, I'm gonna put it in the Bay Mountain, but that, hey, I was planning one time, get to Adele, but then it's like Adele Green was a hedge, Allen Moore promoted it, and we bypassed that period, come back in down here, five foot, beautiful junction, but that, that, when he first landed, was there, the, I want to take more of the business, what you think we did, Taylor County would not be like the village, and Danny Driver would say that, we got a plan, we ready to park, Citrus County was a county, we supported that, they won't have the first major county commissioner now that didn't have, William Langley was the last one, my chair of order just, that's like the moon, anyway, that's why they want to get that thing, oh, that I.
Well, the one thing that I did say, and I know you can put it in the honey, that if, if that road does come through Taylor County, that, that probably will, then, uh, my job will be to try my best to get them to work with what we've got. Now, I need to highway nineteen and twenty-seven, that's our main in and out, and that's why I'm, this is, a lot of my business is part of it, people stop that. I don't know that people coming down nineteen and twenty-seven, how many actually come uptown here? My guess is that most of them probably just stop on nineteen and keep going, or maybe two off to the Walmart there, but, um, my, my goal will be to argue to try and keep you thought we've gotten, I don't know how they would do that.
I agree, man, that's, that's notable, but they, I'm gonna put it on, we actually say we know.
Of course not, but, I mean, if, if, you know, we'll talk, I will tell my guests that at least, I don't want it, nine miles out there for, everybody that is coming through Taylor County now will not be coming through here, and they won't stop to drop nine miles to get gas, and they go right down to Jefferson County and have a gas station right there, because they're gonna, you know, where they're tied in, so, I don't know, I just.
Because apparently that's been interstate looking, making, and I would be like, in the South County, and politics, my fraternity, they, they could ignore, but the interstate still.
but the interstate still, our motel industry, we have more hotels, the Tower, and they are connected with like me, I think, yeah. But anyway, I appreciate, I, I walked and he did good, and it's.
Well, there's, there's, a lot of people there that, uh, were concerned about, you know, this is, this is our little, little county, and we have a lot of natural resources, and it's quiet, this way back, and, and people don't want, uh, uh, five hundred puppy cover houses to come in. Uh, you know, all what we're saying, and the tu- about puppy cover, and, you know, they're worried about our, our wetlands and our, and all kind of things with our natural resources, and, you know, I don't agree to become a Crystal River at all, because I like what we've got here, but we need more jobs, that's for sure, yeah.
I was gonna say, they gonna demand more vote, right? It's like awesome.
Well, uh, whatever.
I'm gonna, I'm done, man, but. That's a fact. With the Nelson-Solari and Pliny Council, the Alachua County, uh, delegation, they, uh, they are bad against us.
I know that, and we're.
Marion County is bad against us. The thing that bothers me, if you go to Gainesville, you don't go to everybody else, not High Springs, but New York. On twenty-sixth and one seventy-seven, it's, it's, it's built, wall, solid wall, all the way down, and, uh, I wonder what, what their party beginning is, why they don't want it. I, I'm the economic consultant, I might not be for a toll road or anything like that.
They think about seventy-five, and they don't want it.
Well, I do know that economic consultants, when you go out and try to tell your town, they wanna know what interstate folks say you're on there. And if you don't have these six chains that'll get off, you, you probably won't get it. And I reckon if you ain't got the right economic consultant, you're not gonna get it either. But when, now, they got somebody on that from Tower, actually, on the county, it won't affect them. You got one from Gainesville, it won't affect them, one from Marion County, won't affect them, but that's, if you want some money, you go to those counties and you find out people that have got the money. They got the money more population-wise. You go to Dale County, you know, you try and make it. Somebody out there, and people owe a lot of money. So, and, and I reckon what I'm saying, I like to hear what they got to say. That schedule you got, I, I won't run them straight with the, you know, the people you represent, they want you to go and, and be in the note, when they ask you a question, they want you to know what they're doing.
And I want everybody to.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
So, uh, you know, we're all in this together. Uh, and I, I heard, again, you know, I do a lot of, uh, man around, like, fifty, or not, fifteen minute breaks we have all day, but, uh, I heard, now, let's just say, that Marion County was against it because of their forty farms and their industry, that they don't, they don't want that, you know, uh, um, a, a quiet little area will not be quiet again.
But if you go out, you know, and I was in Ocala, my cousins in, in, in security, I went out two hundred, that'd be another town, I, I, I stay on two hundred now, bigger than the old, old county, you know, downtown forty, oh, you go out there, man, it looks like a new city, like you going toward a Citrus County?
Yeah.
That's a new city, I think, that's, uh, part of.
Right, but I wish, you know, there, there were more answers, but during that whole day, every, every task force member was asking questions, and there just was not many answers yet. But yet, what's funny, is we've got just a little over twelve months, to have a recommendating for the governor. Now, and I said, how do we want, do you expect this, and, and in our county, sometimes it takes longer than that to, to do something. How are we, how are you gonna build a multi-million dollar road and, and get the plans in twelve months, thirteen months? They said, well, we're gonna do it. So, I don't know if that rush of jobs is good or not, you know what I'm saying? I get kind of, uh, a little suspicious of such a big, multi-million dollar project being, being rushed through.
Um, did anybody mention imminent zoning condemnation?
No.
Because, let me tell you something, um, you know, and I, there's a brand new law, your eyes should, some of the I-ten stuff, and I remember there was a window in I-ten, in I-ten, and the first thing that you do in a condemnation is you, you know, is, if you can't negotiate with the landowner without having to go to court, then you file a complaint for, uh, imminent demand or condemnation, and the court has to rule that it's for the public good of taking a person's property. And there's gonna be a judge there, or two, or three, that's gonna say, you know, I don't think it's gonna be for the public good, and I'm not gonna grant this taken. You know what I'm saying? Then if they did grant this taken, then you have a twelve-person jury, if you're not able to sell, which will set what the piece of property will cost, plus lots of business, you know, lots to the remainder and so forth, I mean, it's, it, that takes time, and then there's gonna be appeal, you know?
Yeah.
So, I don't know if these people, and that's what I was really interested in, is, you know, did anybody even mention that?
I can see that, I read it, you drive all there, and it's free, and then all of them get the thing, benefit, but it's, it's, it's free, okay? I've been took two or three of those.
Yeah, but, but there was, you know, probably comments about, like I said earlier, that, well, the only people that really makes any money be the landowners, the contractors, and.
Oh, you're, I know, yeah, yeah.
But it's a very aggressive, uh, schedule with such hard, not, not, not answers, or at least they're saying they don't have answers, you know?
You can watch every minute, and you can watch Bad Home Florida Channel. You think, you think we've been watching again, I did, she did good, Florida Channel.
Well, anyway, uh, please, y'all, go to as many of these as you can, watch it, and, um, help me. Help me.
What's this, the project eight years? Like I already said, how many can be in one county just last five years? It is, so, two thousand thirty is really, uh, good day to say if you want to complete it.
But, I mean, for me, the fourteen months, we're trying to have, fourteen months to have it, whole thing ready to begin? Uh, I, I, I don't know, um, anyway, uh, it was a very interesting meeting, I'll, I'll tell you that, um. Okay, we'll keep going, county district attorney, August twenty-fourth, working, because ethics training has a big opportunity this year.
Um, as you may know, September tenth, there is ethics training scheduled that Mr. Ollie helped put in place. It is sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce and the Perry newspaper, um, and it is advertised as a free ethics training for, in, anyone in the public, um, constitutional officers, elected officials, et cetera. And, um, it has, it has come out that there is a charge for this ethics training, uh, five hundred dollars. And I just need some guidance from the board, if you would be willing to use so much devoted money that you have for that training, there is some, there is some funds in that budget, if you would like to pay for all the attendance at this training, or, or if you would rather do something else.
Well, wait a minute, what's free about it? Well.
What's it, what's it, can you talk to the lady pay for?
It was advertised as free ethics training to members of the public, constitutional officers, elected officials. I'm sure anyone who would like to attend is welcome at this function. I, I know there was, um, this was put on last year, and the services were volunteered last year. This year, there is a charge of five hundred dollars for these services. Now, we have three commissioners to have until the end of the calendar year to obtain your ethics training. And the next, the next scheduled training that I have found is November nineteenth in Broward County.
But, but you're asking, you're, you're.
That's what I think, yeah, that's.
No, I don't know, I'm not done. You're asking us, do we wanna give taxpayer money to pay for this, for free for everybody? If that's what you're asking, my answer is no, and no, but heck, no. Many people that want to go, that's a person that's putting it on, saying, I'll put it on for this amount of money, so we can get enough participants to pay for it, but no, I'm not gonna give you my taxpayer, use taxpayer money to pay for everybody to go to sleep, and you know.
I think the, um, probably the upside when this was initially posed to the board was that there would be a potential taking because you would not have to travel for this training, which I understand. Yes, ma'am, you can, that is an option. And, uh, and again, the next training that I found is during the, the display conference, November nineteenth. So, those of you who have, we have two commissioners who have met their, um, their responsibilities for this year. Three commissioners who need a training, we have until the end of December. I don't know if there will be another scheduled training, sometimes they do try to fit one in, but as of now, um, your options are to, um, um, study online, um, go to Broward County, November nineteenth, or there is, there is the scheduled training on September tenth. Um, now, there was some discussion of possibly obtaining a price per person, and then utilizing that method, but I don't, I, I don't know if that's an option anymore, or part, or, you know, potentially, um, having it broken down between the different, the city, the county, and constitutional officers, things like that, because we do have three commissioners to, to do, for, for the training. And we typically pay, I believe, seventy-five dollars a person.
Just for the training?
Yes.
Doesn't include, uh, the motel bills?
No.
Rob, can you have me talk out to ladies for a second?
Okay, yeah.
Oh, he'll do a free, he did it last year for a double jockey's making donation, he gets, they get, it was at that school ago, they get fifteen hundred dollars a day, fifteen hundred or a thousand dollars a day for what they do. He says five hundred dollars to cover our expenses, he can afford that, it's not, he knows, okay? He thinks, I can't believe in the one of that, in this much time, it's like, it'll be free for just five hundred dollars, he'll do it for nothing. I just ask him, he'll do it for nothing, it's just, he can't, I can't believe, I, I'm invested, yes, in this much time, two all the chambers trying to get some money, he'll do it free, okay? And he's got a lot of predictions, look at him, okay, just back to the point, I think that he has a training, okay? Appointing elected states from out of this, this force, would he be pretty good? He's very good, he, he did every department head in Hope County, he did statewide, all over the county, and I always talk about, I am his, our grandparents, great-grandparents for citizens, I think, but if that's, that's, all out for him to forget five hundred dollars, okay? He'll do it for that, that's another way, uh, now, if anybody ever does that, I think, it might be pretty good, mightn't it?
It would be.
But, but Daniel wants to do it, and the family on earth agrees to sponsor, Perry newspaper agrees to sign us, they're not paying him, I think, they just know the cost, they're interested in doing it, okay? I can't believe that they spend this, this much time for over five hundred dollars, okay? Uh, Daniel's got, he's been around today, woman, that's how much he do now, there's some of the things, he's kind of issued, can't say, he's gonna change his, his, uh, case status, I guess, but he's, he's a, he's known statewide, and, uh, before, yeah, we can do it, but, you know, we can, I'm always embarrassed, in terms of, do you want all this, you know, uh, W. Thomas, that's enough, too, but he does a good job, and I'm interested in, and I'm gonna live and watch, I take it, I believe, but what, if he'll just camp five hundred dollars for one of them, get that? If he wanted to finish it, that's fine, I'm not gonna get it, beg you for five hundred dollars, and he'll do it free, okay? Thank you.
So, the twenty-two second, you don't have to pay five hundred dollars?
That's fine.
Yeah, but I, I, I just don't think it's right.
But I agree, we can.
To pay, to pay taxpayer money to pay for, something for everybody that, you know, to, uh, participate, I just don't think that's right.
Well, I bought it, and he didn't, he couldn't afford five hundred dollars to cover his costs, that's why, that was, Michael said, that's damn, to ask for five hundred dollars, he didn't wanna do it, and that's what we got, we got, I, I need to do it free, Michael wasn't had, had it right. I can't believe, I, I'm invested, that you never call the chamber, call it, the folks trying to get five hundred dollars for something that makes so much sense. But anyway, we get five hundred dollars, and I guess we'll go ahead with it. I'd like the all the motel ethics training, it's good, Michael's in there, uh, Michael uses it, it's a good thing, yeah. I'm, I appreciate it, but Daniel's office has every elected special in the county, Phil Ward, Seagull, everybody, just for her, but she's got a sponsor, it's always awesome. And anybody that's appointed to a position, ought to have agreed to take ethics training, does that make any sense?
We all agree with ethics training, all of it, but there's, there's no question about ethics training, we have to take it by law, and it's a good thing. My only, uh, thing was, I just don't feel like this. Taylor County should pay for other entities to take the two, if we can round around.
He made, he made it for him, he made it for him, he'll do it.
Okay, thank you, we got, we got.
I'm very.
We got, I have to. So, what's the pressure on the board?
I'd like the all the mothers, if you will, and children, if you can.
Okay, there'll be no action then on this item, is that a, a grandma with everyone?
Let me speak this for a moment. I wanted to speak that training, and the one you brought up on a curve is, Ben, uh, I certainly have no doubt that you donated whatever money we have for training for me, District One Commission. We got two hundred dollars in that little fund, a hundred and six, that's a great western, these people have to move, bro, now, I know I don't have five hundred dollars here.
There is, so, so, when, your individual line item for travel is just travel, there is another line item for, see, it's just registration, training, things like that. So, there is, uh, over seven hundred dollars in that line item.
Just for district one?
For all districts, for everyone.
That one's a great fund, if we can pay to occupy one of them.
Well, it's almost the end of the fiscal year, so, I don't know if anyone anticipates any other registrations for conferences, or training, or any such as that. But typically, when we pay the per cost for ethics training, it is, it is charged to that line item in the, what we call the D O P C account. And so, all five commissioners would be charged with that line item.
Not, but it's out, district one, we call it, I love that.
For, for just the training part, not the travel part.
Oh, he's taking us all off the hook. He's taking it from himself, this would happen, so I guess no action, it's, some of the critics, some of the Daniel, they're fine, but you don't have to do a thing, but I've encouraged people to go, then, and sign up, I, 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 and I tell you, I tell you, he's good, he's, uh, he's very good, he's, he's had every department head in Hope County, he's had it all over the state. And his granddaddy played football, and he goes, and he do a scholarship for the school here, he's doing it for the county.
So, what, what a person like that should do, was say, I'm gonna house this program, and stuff today, it costs, it's two dollars a person, twenty-five dollars a person, or whatever, so all of us can come, pay their part.
It's not him saying it's us, and Daniel, he didn't, he didn't initiate it, okay? We had to have him, I'm lucky, last year we paid a double jockey's making, that's what he charged last time, okay? And this time, five hundred dollars, I told him, he's gonna do handouts for all the people, copies and all that. Copies and all that, I, I, I'm, I'm just, I'm embarrassed, it's, 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 it's.
Okay, so we want, we want to just, um, move on.
What's wrong with this?
Move on.
Move on, I thought we needed to move on. Move on.
Okay.
I'm twenty-five, the county administrator for the Southern Regional Alliance. Um, I just wanted to update the board on upcoming meetings that we have in September. September's a very busy month. Um, as a reminder, September fifth, at one thirty, is the meeting in Dixie County, um, with the neighbor's farm. Um, on September sixth is the North Florida Economic Development Partnership, or the, or the, partnership meeting at Big Den Technical College, that starts at nine o'clock. Then, um, on September ninth, Miss Amy May, we have a budget hearing at five oh one, correct?
Um, nine to the sixteenth. We've got two meetings there.
What time is the September ninth week?
Five oh one.
What?
And I believe the sixteenth at five oh one.
Yeah, I, I think she don't have it on the calendar yet, but it's September the ninth, at five oh one, September the sixteenth.
Is September the ninth? Is on Monday, it's hard.
And the sixteenth, so that's the first of our-
What day are we, the sixteenth?
It's Monday.
Monday.
What about, is it not the wrong month?
Yes, sir. And that's our, our budget, our public hearings, we're-
You know, seventeenth, Tuesday, we're meeting, and the twenty-fourth, workshop. And I'm working on the calendar for the Value Adjustment Board, and we have two, two members on there, plus an alternate. I'm trying to give that stuff out, we have to have the organizational meeting, and the time to give the decision, so. And the organizational, on the up, three, on September sixth, October.
Is it just, uh, eight hours, or two hours?
Sure.
Cause it looks, has some, it's a privilege.
And then I, um, sent you a message that I know you are looking at some town hall meetings, so-
Yeah.
There may be accomplished with one of the, um, with one of your days, on the ninth.
Hi, yeah, um-
I guess we have, you have a public hearing tomorrow.
Yeah, what are we gonna do at that budget meeting, and that?
At, at the first one, you will create a technical budget, and then have a public hearing. And then on the sixteenth, we will be the final budget, and that's all the resolutions and the, uh, documents that have to be addressed.
So, uh, um, September the ninth, at five oh one, that probably won't take but two minutes.
I would make, I'm making up a lot of people, yes.
Okay, I've already advertised for my town hall meetings, I've got four coming up. Um, and, um, so, um, I'll be here at five oh one. But I may have to leave, my morning.
I remember that.
Are you leaving at six o'clock?
Six o'clock, yeah, I began at six.
Okay, you and that nine five, Dixie County meeting, nine six, the North Florida Economic Development at nine, it's, uh, we've been told.
At Big Den Technical College, nine nine and nine sixteen are our, um, public hearing three, that's it. Uh, nine seventeen is regular board meeting, nine twenty-four workshop, and you're thinking nine twenty-six, Value Adjustment Board.
What's nine twenty-six?
The, the Value Adjustment.
Eighty-eight? Now, I got, I got a challenge, a little bit.
Very busy, huh? I'm telling you. Thank you, thank you.
I'm trying to cut some car, we gotta go to the landfill, and that's all we, I don't know which engine, yeah, that's, that's, yeah.
Except for how long we stay in the motor and all that, so.
Better be prime rib this time, more than we work.
I think I was supposed to go with you, huh?
You're supposed to go, yeah. I'm gonna duck car, yeah. But you want to tell this town, I call them, no, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna prime rib it. The way we all.
Okay, I'll be twenty-six, tell me if the concerns from the public are not agenda, um, yes, sir.
And which one is number one, River Club, Green Hatchet? After your last meeting, when you broke the code from Rose and Green Hatchet, I decided to research the code, and who owns the park that we are. And I was surprised, and I found out that the county commission owns a lot on First Avenue Northwest, at its own delivery. And it's a few hundred yards, maybe, from the sixty acres that we also own. I do not know if this is something that you could turn into a boat ramp, with sixty acres of parking. If you could, you could take your boat ramp that you have now, limit the number of boats that they can lock in any given day, and then close that up, and send everybody down to the western ramp. And we would include your traffic presence in Green Hatchet. And we would eliminate trucks and trailers and boats, parking in the neighborhoods all the way around, and just the boat ramp. All those people would be very cheap, not to look out there. They, you know, the weekends, and keep these parking, um.
Okay, but is that on the, you remember that was one, um, track, parking number? It's on the, that was valued at three hundred thousand dollars, and it was-
No, the value, I really think it's a hundred thousand.
Well, I mean, you miss now, about the, about the, I don't know, but it was about six lots, and then it was allowed with-
Fifty-one lots. Uh, I think I was never aware of this before, and I should have been, because I probably should have seen that chain calendar. And I'd be glad to be at your workshop, depending on being anywhere. You know, have handouts for you, so you can see where it is. Anybody that's seen before again, um, I've gotten my help.
And you've sent them over to-
I've already given, along with coffee, I think.
And then, yeah, it's all, yeah, okay, yeah.
But I think, I'm already listening to the discussion today about boat ramps and traffic. That if it was hot, you could park in there. You could do what a lot of other counties do on their ramp. It's running up, will take a hundred cars, or a hundred boats and trucks and boats. And then nobody else can park there, or leave that ramp. And in this case, if someone is down there, it's maybe a quarter mile.
So it would be a boat ramp, straight down into the river.
Yeah, which the lot you own is on the river, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's also on First Avenue, which I have to, it's-
That's about how to rescue.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, if not, we'll go to, I mean, for seven more, if we're rational, I'll, please, please.
The kids are getting bad, and, uh, we just need to keep the furthest one. Had to blind out an hour, so I called and said, the truck's riding around, I ain't running, but wasn't coming out of it. He needs, needs to get a rearview mirror, or, but not easily, it's gonna, but they, they all getting bad.
You probably need to find out where that was, and what's going on with that. But it wasn't going too fast, though, right?
Wasn't going too fast, but they, they weren't looking out their scores, you know? That's all.
Okay.
I just want to flash, go on and stack. Washington, probably, some American blue, roll off tight.
Yay.
Uh, we finally, uh, got the fog started again. And slowed down, because our workforce has been busy, and it should be, now, and it's been happening with the warriors. I would ask, you know, I think I know that, are we still pumping down there, or what?
Yes. We have, as of today, three large pumps pumping, um, the flooded area on Central Avenue. So we have two pumps on Central, and then one on Fourteenth. And they're both pumping out of the same pump. Um, and we have a small pump on Second Avenue, um, as of, or for today.
Did you, homes and the other parks that you tried to rent, were you ever able to secure all the materials you needed?
There was one missing traffic crossing that was finally located in New Jersey. But we determined that with the time it would take to, to get it here, that that would be a futile effort. So what we're doing now is obtaining, trying to secure some funding for purchasing a set of ramps, which would be five thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars, um, to keep on site. And we purchased a hose, which Commissioner Murphy placed the money out of his, his district's funds. So as, when this is all said and done, we'll have a large pump, eighty-five hundred feet of hose, and, um, one set of the traffic crossings.
Well, we don't have to borrow, you mean?
Well, we will, we, if there's another event like we're dealing with now, we will have to, we will have to rent pumps.
Right.
So we'll have a hose, which is the most expensive, and we'll have at least one set of, of the traffic crossings. So we have two sets now, and so we have water going in two different directions, off Central, which was the last area that was still flooded as of today.
We don't know how much it's going to rain, I think it rains down every day, it's gonna be. But other than all summer showers, is there any end in sight for the pumping, or can you, you a pedestrian? Maybe you thought two more weeks would be?
I don't think it will be that long, um, you know, sometimes it's hard to tell, but Hank told me earlier today there was three large pumps going, that he thought that they could clear it out in maybe a few days. And I hate to, to promise that, but I, I, he didn't, it didn't sound like it would be in an additional two weeks. Um, and it, and some of this is contingent upon what's happening with the groundwater levels. We've had some things in our favor the last week, because it hasn't been raining as much, and it's been extremely hot, which helps with the evaporation. And the river is not as high, so the groundwater level has dropped, which gives the water another place to go. So I think that the recession of the water isn't just due to the pumping, it's just another major, and that's the question, so.
No. I had someone mention today, that he had been down there, and he had seen our county involved, he's out there ditching stuff through the ways to go, working. And he called me, he's in the middle of Dishes County, he's, you know, slow, or whatever, trying to leave me, he's letting me on that side.
Well, I know-
He, uh, complimenting his favorite county, and, and, definitely, so. My head's off, he, he's connecting the people that's lived it all this time.
Hank and Scott were there all weekend. I, I drove to Green Hatchet Sunday to check on them, and they, they were looking pretty tired. But they have been very committed, um, and the, the public works employees have been there around the clock, because, you know, we have to watch these pumps. So, um, they, they're all starting to look tired, but other than that, um-
Wind, wind comes down dark, they, they were all out.
Uh, they were all night.
Seventy-five gallons of diesel per day, each. And they're so clean over the first, for any, if you were to make it, bring it to that.
Not much is a presidential declaration, which I doubt, because-
I doubt they don't get it.
I don't know that, well, how they expect, uh, the storm, so, um... But in, in my comp, the way I look at it, is if we have an employee who has to watch one pump, then we might as well have the employee watch three pumps, and then we hopefully will not encourage them to overtime, because that one, how many employees can watch all three pumps at the same time?
Right.
So that was the thought process, hoping to shore up, shorten up the amount of time that we spent pumping. So you're still going to have the funds that you spent for vehicles, but then, um, and then the rental of the equipment, but I would say this is, I, I think we'll be better prepared if there's a next pump, because we'll have one set of rail crossings, um, on hand, that we were planning to purchase from, from some public works funding that was not spent. And we'll have all the hoses, and then we'll have the one pump.
Good. Bring me all of these, Paul.
Was that company company you said on, cause they're in informational items, said on the agenda as later day, about the purchase of this, that we talked about?
I, no, we've already purchased the hose, and the, the ramps are less than two thousand dollars. And we have, we have money in that department to purchase.
But yeah, so, um, there will be another pump, Green Hatchet will flood again, it'll happen again. And, um, I, I think that, um, this is why we need to seriously start looking at long-term drainage. It is there, how are we gonna make no improvement, how are we gonna try to, if we can use the cover money, or what else is out there, but we have to be reactive. We have to go ahead and, um, and, and see to it, instead of waiting to see next one, then go through that front strapping thing that we did this, this past weekend, where you can't get stuck here, starting last week. And, and that, you know, I wonder, if we're watching this one company, is there just one company that, that we can, that can just kind of pump the hose and stuff, they're the only company?
Well, I don't know, um, that was, that was the best solution at the time, you know, in Calhasy. But I even called some poor man who worked for corporate, Zylons, to, to his main sector, the road crossings, Saturday night. And he sent me right back to, he sent me to someone else, he sent me right back to the company in Calhasy. So I think the road crossings are actually the specialty item that we have set some hard time with.
Well, I, I would think that there would be somebody else in the southeast that would have that kind of stuff, and it might be that you all would want to make a list.
Oh, research, yes, I'm saying, I had a time, different companies, and their contact, just to make, and just give them a call and say, "In the event."
Right. How soon could we expect, and this and that and the other?
Um, but I think having the, the rail crossings, that we, because we started by to purchase them, um, used. So we basically are seeking one set of the rail crossings. Once we have those, now we have the hose, we have a pump, we can at least get started if, in the event this happens again. I, I do believe we'll have an advantage, because we'll have everything on hand that we need. Um, and then we can, it may be that we can use hazard mitigation funds to purchase some of these items. We have a meeting of the, um, elementarys coming up next week, I believe. And, um, we were going to discuss possibly, um, applying for a grant, for a grant study. I'm going to ask the question, if we can purchase equipment that we can keep on hand, just to, so we are not waiting days for things to be delivered, and then if they don't get here, and then all, all this involves in the labor, back and forth.
Yeah, well, all of this is trying to take up probably a considerable amount of time to get this future plan to work out. In the meantime, it'll probably flood again, and, um, and we can make sure that, that there are other companies that we can, that we can get in touch with them, and they're gonna be dependable, to give us what we need. This is very, very frustrating for me, it had to be a hundred times more than you. I just want to commend our staff, so I think our staff has done everything that they can do. Uh, and I, I commend them for the work that they've done. Um, I, I, I want to ask y'all, did y'all, uh, the re- twice, did y'all, during this period of time, did you, did you know what the county was doing, did you know our effort, how did you know?
I'm, I'm watching.
Okay.
I actually seen your trucks, and the people, and the shovels, and the, and the pumps. It's coming on, and she's, she's, yeah.
Good, so you felt like that, that we were doing everything that we could?
I do, however, some of the people would watch still in their homes, don't think that way.
Wow.
But that's home.
Well, I mean, I, I'm just, we were visible, and...
Right, they were very visible.
I don't see how anybody could conclude, uh, conclude that we were not, you know, at least doing our very best.
No, I didn't think that was what they were thinking. They were upset that their homes had not...
I understand.
Right, yeah. I had three things, riding on Wood Street Road, be able to get any fat station on that, they said it was a bad wreck out there about two weeks ago. You know, is that our road, or the city, part of that old road? City is part of the Goff's Drive, and, but when the person gets killed or something out on that road, we all feel it in our heart, so... No woman that is making this part of what we're gonna have in mind. I know them, I've been asked by the Goff's Road, and I, he said that Chick really doing a good job. If you're fifty-five, and you, if it's forty-five, and you run to fifty-five, he'd give you a ticket. So he asked me to bring up about fifty-five mile an hour to Goff's Road. So, and, and he couldn't do good at that.
No. I know, I know, but look at the marks on the road, you can tell it's going on.
All right.
It's right in front of my house.
And I'm starting to get beat about the House Road, too, you know, that, that, hey, we, we need some pavement, and it's, and it's appearing every day.
I'll send you the information on, on that.
On House Road?
Yes, sure.
Okay, all right.
One minute, one minute, just run it around.
All right, okay. That's it, you know, my house, my house goes up for you, I know we've been working the last three, four weeks, pretty, little carcy. And I, when I went down to that, had a, big water, a freight water fix commission meeting. I can see how, you know, those frustrations can get started, especially if one might get miscalculated or mischievous with his information. And it's sort of get out of hand pretty quick. The one thing I do like, the use that I like about this meeting, Pam's got it directed to the board and not only the individuals. You know, so, we don't take it personally, but a lot of things we can't do is a lot of things we can do. And if we throw it out there, get the information out, and everybody understands that, we, you know, we, we, we get on. Gotcha. And I'll tell you what, when they beat up on you, if it's not you, it's beating them up. All right, it's a job to beat them up, and you're doing okay. That's all I can say.
Commissioner Murphy, we've pretty much touched all the subjects that I want to read to you, while I do want to read to the county employees. We have gone farther beyond. We see it, I read it, I was on the ground, Sea Hatchet, seventy-eight, never mentioned, seventy-eight. How many days down seven, is that TV down there?
Yes.
I've seen it, it was me and that. So Hank, and that goes to all the county employees, I mean, they have a lot of trouble, too. They were home, like, in military operation out there, so it's true. I mean, we brought them on, boy, that's what happened.
Yeah, okay. Okay, got people?
Ma'am.
Anybody, anybody else?
I have one question, so it was, these guards, if you, these are trucking for the houses, are they metal, or one of the data?
They're plastic, so, so it's two pieces, there's a connector in the, in the middle.
They're cut out of clay.
It's a six inch, it's a, it has a six inch opening for the hose to pass through, and there are connectors in the, in the crossing.
I live with something metal, we got all kinds of metal fabricators, this guy, if you make any of it.
And, and that's possible, if...
It's possible. Get them a picture or pattern of it, and we would have, we would have a D O T rated, if that's...
It does have to be rated for a certain amount of T S I.
That's been near, yes, that's, that's where the cost comes down on this thing. Oh, near, sort of.
Okay, I, today I've got a preliminary road paving, let's go on, thank you for that. Do you know how much it's on there? That is the current amount that, and come October the first, there'll be, do you, and do you have a prediction of how much more is coming down each one?
I don't know if that is enough. It is, I, I don't know, I lost a couple of my heads, but I'll check. And remember, next fiscal year, um, if we are able to obtain another network squad, that that will be charged directly to your secondary rotating, um, for each, history. But I'll check on the, um, on that, and that for next year.
Okay, all right. I wanna thank the public for being here, I wanna thank my fellow board members, um, um, we don't always agree, but that's just the way it goes, we've been going very well, we've worked well together, and, um, I just appreciate, um, the board that we have, and, um, it's a pleasure for me to work with you all. If there's nothing else, it's an emotion to adjourn.
Move in here, please.
All right, say, say aye?
Aye.